...of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation underground indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you all for coming this evening. Debbie, we call the roll.
Trustee Guyer.
Here.
Trustee Spurling.
Here.
Trustee Baumann. Trustee Youngerman.
Here.
Trustee Marasek.
Here.
Trustee Betzinger.
Here.
Okay, we do have a quorum this evening. Our first item for public participation tonight is recognition of Officer Grimes for nine years of service. Chief?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. John, can you come down? So those who don't know, John is our last part-time police officer we have working for the village. John came to us back in 2014 after an illustrious career with the sheriff's office where he worked for thirty years, rose to rank of sergeant, decided that just wasn't enough, wanted to come work for Montgomery. John has been a true friend, a mentor, a trainer, a valuable asset to our village. Been here for nine years, does a wonderful job. In January, he came to me and said, "Chief, I think I'd like to retire again." And that was in January. I said, "John, do you think you could hang on for a couple more months? We transition a couple more guys?" And he hung around for a couple more months, and then he said, "It's time to go." But John was the guy, anytime we needed him, he was the guy we called, he showed up. You've all seen him for our Montgomery Fest and every other festival we had, John's always been there for us. So John, the village thanks you, our department thanks you, I thank you, and all those men and women standing up there wearing all those blue uniforms, thank you. All right, congratulations, and it's not goodbye.
Members for coming tonight, appreciate it. Members for coming tonight, appreciate it. Give them a second. All right, move on to public comments this evening. I know there is a sign-up sheet. The first person on the sign-up sheet, I believe, is from Lakewood Creek, wishes to address the board. Go ahead.
Hi, everyone. My name is Kelly Young. I'm from Lakewood Creek Elementary. I'm the president of our HSO. Thank you for giving me the time to speak. Real quick, I have some big concerns that have come down from myself as a parent, but also as the HSO and the principal and assistant principal about speeding and reckless driving in front of our school on Lakewood Creek Drive. It's gotten quite out of hand. There are people not stopping at stop signs, speeding. They're on their cell phones and no, you know, you can't be on your cellphone in a school zone. They are failing to stop at our crossing guard stop signs. I go out for jogs multiple times a day. People are not stopping at stop signs around the school and in the subdivision. It's going to take one child to get hurt, and then we're going to have a big problem. Our assistant principal, Adam Lewickis, already went to, I believe it was called, I'm sorry, I had to pull that back up, Illinois Safe Routes Grant Program. There was a meeting about it, and our school does not meet the minimum requirements to get assistance through that program. So I'm asking the village to please help us with something, whether it be speed bumps by the school. I know you already did the no parking on Lakewood Creek Drive. Those yellow lines are now faded. They should be repainted, please. And also, maybe having more police presence if possible, but also ticketing. Just ticket these parents, ticket these offenders that can't follow these laws that are going to keep our children safe. That is my number-one concern. I just don't want a child to get hurt because other people can't follow the rules. That's all. Thank you so much.
Awesome. Thank you, Kelly. And Kelly, do you have contact with the police department? Contact information?
I can find it.
Or if you can, if you can get yours to chief? Thank you for coming. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
All right, the next public comment, I would like to invite John Philipchuck up to...
Yes, good evening. My name is John Philipchuck. I'm an attorney at 111 East Jefferson Avenue in Naperville, Illinois. I'm here representing NGH Farms LLC and 5H LLC, the petitioners and owners of about 250 acres of land on the west side of Orchard and north of Route 30. This evening, you have four ordinances before you for adoption. First one will be the annexation agreement. The second one would be the ordinance that would annex the property into the village. The third one would be the granting of the zoning, the special use for the planned unit development. And then the fourth one would be the special uses and things that go along with some of the zoning districts. We've got some B2, general retail. We've got some M1, limited manufacturing. And then we have some M2 on parcel three. That's a general manufacturing district. We do have a provision in one of our parcels there for parcel, parcel eight, part of parcel eight and seven, that we could have, after ten years of trying for the retail, that we could have some adult aged restricted residential in there. But right now, some of the concerns and questions that came up at plan commission were with regard to the mining aspect. It's just a small parcel up at the north end of the property adjacent Orchard Road across from the industrial park on the east side of Orchard Road. There is about a five-acre parcel there that would be set aside for a ready-mix plant, which would include the bulk storage of aggregate, the sand and gravel for the mix, an office garage, and the ready-mix trucks. The portion that'd be mined, we have a 50-foot setback under your ordinance, where there'd be a six-foot berm minimum that would go up adjacent to the property lines around that. Back haul is used to do the mining of the sand and gravel. There'd be some crushing operations, and there'd be the stockpiling of the various aggregate that comes out of the ground. The certain aspects of the operation, there was concern about dust and particulate matter. The family that operates the Foxridge Stone has done that for over forty years. They've been good neighbors with their adjacent residential subdivisions that are right next door to them, literally right next door to them. And so they are cognizant of the, what it takes to keep the dust down. Sometimes they've, they've used some of the grindings from road surfaces to, they make it almost like an asphalt surface. But the mining operations, we don't anticipate those will begin until after we get the users in that would necessitate the improvement of that Orchard-Awket Road intersection. We want to see that full intersection go in, an extension of Awket Road from Orchard Road. That would be the main point of ingress and egress would be out there. So everything else would be north of that. The, it was mentioned that in addition to water, which we have ample water capabilities, once you start to dig, you get the groundwater, and we've got Blackberry Creek that are used for dust control. And then we also use calcium chloride, too. That's another thing that's used for dust control. So we understand how that works, and we've done it for forty years over at Foxridge Stone there on 71 and Minkler Road in Oswego. And, and we mentioned that there is the possibility, if the, if the stone is of the good commercial grade and quality, that there could be some limestone mining when you get below the gravel deposits. We're not positive on that, but that, again, is regulated. The, the family has worked in the limestone business up in Bowling Brook. We've been in the village of Bowling Brook, across, again, from residential subdivisions next to the country club. And so we're familiar with what is involved, and it's very well regulated. I know people get concerned that we're going to shake their houses down. That's not the case. You have like one to two blasts, one second a month typically, if you're mining that much of the stone. And it's all controlled by the IDNR, Illinois Department of Natural Resources. They oversee it. There are seismic machines that are set up to understand any vibration issues that come as a result of it. So I just wanted to cover those big topics, if you will, to make sure that I got the understanding out there. I know I've read some things online that maybe weren't quite as accurate as what we have portrayed in our hearings, but this is what we're pledging to you as the village, and you certainly can go back and look at the track records that we've established with the village of Bowling Brook, the village of Oswego. We worked on annexation agreement and zoning with Oswego for the operations there. And again, we watched the Pulte subdivision come in Arbergate right next door, build all those houses out, all the mining operations were going on right there in the gravel. And that's a couple hundred acres over there versus a little, maybe, maybe we'd mine thirty or forty of our acres here that we'd be zoning M2. So very, very small, very, very small operation, considered to what we, you know, we've done in the past. So, thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Thanks, sir. Hey, Jen, could you grab the sign-in sheet for me and I'll... That's it. Thank you. Okay, I assume there's others here that would like to speak this evening, and we certainly have time for that. If you could just make your way down to the podium one at a time. In the essence of brevity, if somebody has already stated the exact same thing that you're saying, if you just want to ditto their comments, they will be received. We will appreciate that. Also, as you, as residents did last time, if we could just keep it civil, I value your opinion and your insight, and we're here to hear it. And then just state your name and address, and then you get two minutes.
So, hello, my name is Andre Strelkov. I live at 9S 945 Lyndale Road. So originally, I was not really planning on coming to the vote night itself, since we have, we had our discussion last time, and most of the mines are set. And, but I am glad to see that the special use for the fulfillment center being removed on parcel eight. But I would like to remind everyone here that the warehouses are still on the table adjacent to houses across Creekview Road. We can only hope that those residents will have the full 30-foot setback required, but who knows if a variance will be granted later on to reduce that setback. While some of the findings of fact by the developer were not true, that's not what I'm here to talk about. That is kind of expected when you're doing something that's not liked by the neighbors. My fiance and I would like to go over three items set at previous meetings that at best could be classified as misinformation, which we're disappointed to hear, as these were used to dismiss our concerns. So the first one is the comprehensive plan. Several times, we were told how the development is consistent with the comprehensive plan, and as this, as if this was a wholly imperfect document to follow without question. The Orchard Road-Blackberry Creek corridor plan created by URS in 2005 recommended commercial along US 30 frontage, makes sense. And behind the commercial is clustered, single-family residential to provide additional open area. I quote from the document, "Preservation of Blackberry Creek was identified as a priority by residents and stakeholders during the community outreach component of this assignment. And as a result, 102 acres of land west of Blackberry Creek are recommended for low-density clustered, single-family residential development." End quote. So why was the comprehensive plan put together in 2014 so set on putting a detached industrial area that was surrounded by various residential zonings on the west, east, and north, and commercial on the south? This goes against what the study determined as the recommended course of action. The comprehensive plan also currently shows multifamily residential and park slash open space north of Awket Road. Where is the multifamily and park space dedicated, dictated by the comprehensive plan? So the statement made about how this plan is in line with the comprehensive plan are not true unless there's alternative set of exhibits showing this residential and open space north of Awket Road. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Hi, my name is Shannon Rogers. I live at 9S 945 Lyndale, and I'm going to finish thoughts that he said.
Could you sign in so that we have a record of that, please?
Oh, absolutely.
Do it after you speak, if you want.
Okay, I'll do it then. All right, so our next topic was the impact on the school district. At the last meeting, it was stated that the reason against residential rezoning and the ten-year delay to allow residential was due to the impact on the school district. However, most of the 55 and older communities do not allow school-aged children, setting the age limit to at least 18 and older. If assisted living was considered, it would be even more unlikely to bring kids into the school system. Conditions could be written into the ordinance to set the age limit to at least 18-plus, to prevent any more stress on the school district, if that's a valid concern. Additionally, the TIF incentive should be reviewed to adequately fund emergency services. It's disheartening to see so much money being dumped into other places without considering a service each and every one of us should be grateful for. And then the next one is Route 30. IDOT considers most of Route 30 at Level of Service E, which is severe congestion, especially around the Orchard intersection. When IDOT put Phase 1 documents together, this intersection was found to be within 5% of locations with pressing safety needs. And with the recent accident resulting in a death and traumatized children, we can all see that it's still a super dangerous intersection. The statement that these roads are adequately sized for additional traffic this development will produce is simply not true. They're not even adequately sized for the current amount of traffic. These roads need to be improved before additional traffic is added, and unfortunately, IDOT does not have the widening design within their five-year plan. We would like to see a traffic study done to explain how 120 acres of warehouse will not, quote, "endanger the health, safety, comfort, convenience, and general welfare of the public," specifically looking at the average daily trucks added to Orchard Road. In fairness, Montgomery does support the widening per Resolution 14-015, but it is, but we are nowhere near the widening work even being designed, let alone built. In the meantime, the plan here is to jam hundreds of additional trucks on already congested roads, waving hand at the issue. IDOT will fix it eventually, maybe, and hopefully. Please understand that we do not get to speak after listening to tonight's meeting, and we would rather not have to come back just to refute statements made today and repeat ourselves yet again. We would rather hear the uncomfortable truth you all have decided and point, and having our points dismissed without valid reason. Thank you for listening.
Thank you, Shannon. Thank you. Is there another speaker?
Good evening. Brendan Moran, Sugar Grove Fire Chief, 25, South Municipal Drive, Sugar Grove. A little bit of repeat from last time of the TIF district. So like I said, the last time, $846.13 is all we get off this property. A little more research I was asked to do by a few of the trustees of what tax funds we get in from the Fox Four and Fairfield subdivisions. There's approximately 921 parcels in that subdivision, 850 of which are taxable properties. 2021, the fire district was paid $444,000 roughly. That's average about, the average is about $522 per property. If you looked at our tax rate versus $100,000 of net taxable value, which is really truly where they figure out how much comes to the fire district, at $100,000, it would be $648.18 per property at $100,000. The biggest thing that we find with this TIF district is that we have one in Sugar Grove with a senior living development on it that is generating its net taxable value is $1 million, $1.1 million. We get $44.36 off of that property. If you weren't in the TIF district, we would get $7,700 off that property annually. So that huge gap between those two hampers our ability to expand our services. So I just want to point out that that is where we are looking at as far as TIF districts. Rooftops are a added or increased possibility of us having more call volume. So we welcome development as always, but when you put it in a TIF district, it hampers the fire district and all other taxing bodies. That same property in Sugar Grove that generated $44.36 to the fire district generated $107,000 to the TIF district. So 7,700 is what we should have gotten out of that. Forty-four is what we got, and the TIF district got 107,000. I don't really see how that's fair to all the rest of the taxing bodies. Thank you.
Thanks, chief. Appreciate it. All right, is there any other public comment?
I have a question.
Yeah, if you want to come down to the podium.
Well, before I get down...
We have people online that need to hear what you have to say. Thank you.
Is the exit from our subdivision in question with the annexation?
Presently, it's included as we discussed at the last meeting. Nothing was pulled out in that regard. Could you state your name and address real quick?
Steve Jendrusik, 1702 Blackberry.
All right, Steve.
What I wanted to say is, we, we don't like the idea of what was first prescribed without we're having to make a right every time we leave the subdivision. And the distance from Blackberry to Orchard is about 1,000 feet. If you go up 30 and get to Douglas, at 450 feet, there's a light that allows a left-hand turn into Jewel. If you go 350 feet, there's another turn with the light where you can go into Jewel. So less than 1,000 feet, you've got three lights. We're thinking that if we can get a light to allow our exiting, it's going to make that intersection so much safer. There are a lot of cars going up 30, racing the yellow light and having problems in the intersection. And the only reason that I heard that it wasn't going to be considered is that Douglas is part of Montgomery, but 30 is the state. But I would say if you ran an audit and looked at how many accidents were at Douglas and 30, and compare it to our intersection now, we're getting to be a terrible intersection by virtue of the fact that if you put a light there, you're going to slow a lot of that speeding traffic to that intersection and make it safer. Someone was saying that some of the annexation that you guys want to do is to make our subdivision safer. That would make it safer for everybody that's driving through that intersection. And I don't think there's anyone that can sit here and say that there haven't been a lot of accidents there, in fact fatal.
Yeah. Thank you. All right, any other comments?
Doug Musser, Highway Commissioner, 105 Grove Street, Sugar Grove. I just wanted some clarification. I'm not, I'm in favor of doing an intergovernmental agreement with Creekview when you go up to Griffin. We might as well do that on the way in, way out. I'd like to see some signage, residents only, no trucks, you know, something like that. I don't want them coming through the subdivision. And I'd like, for the record on paper, do you have any plans of annexing in Creekview into the village of Montgomery?
The road...
I know you have to annex Creekside, that spur back there.
Yes.
But is there any plans of annexing the subdivision?
I can comment on that.
You can comment on that?
I will, yeah.
Okay.
At least give my opinion.
Also.
Okay.
At the end of Creekview Drive, that spur, do you have any intentions of going, trying to get through that muck and that creek and that low area to get to Orchard? So they'll have three ways out. Well, Cut, 30, and out there front to 30.
No, that's not possible, correct? Just the, just the...
Okay, just, just Griffin.
Just the west.
Out to All Cut and 30, and then they'll have another 30 that eventually someday be four lanes. Okay, thank you.
Thanks, Commissioner.
Can I respond real quick?
Sure.
I had actually asked, after the, our first village board meeting, I'd actually had a discussion with Engineer Wallers to see if it would make sense to, instead of going out west to Griffin, if we went out directly north into that Awket Road extension? And we weren't able to do that because of floodplain issues. Because I, I, at the, even at the plan commission meeting, as people were walking outside, I was walking outside, I was talking to them. And I think one of the, the big concerns that you guys had was that extension causing cut-through traffic with Stewart.
Definitely.
And so that's why I brought that up with, with Engineer Wallers. I'd still like us to look at that option, because I think it, it would probably solve any potential traffic problem that way.
They got, they got two choices. They don't want to go through a subdivision of traffic, more than likely.
But, yes, I don't want to see that become a cut-through.
Yeah, maybe some science to deter.
Perfect. Thank you, sir. Thanks. Appreciate it. You can come down here.
My name is Marion Bond. I live at 3,003 Foxmore Drive. I am also the Sugar Grove Township clerk, and I did receive a letter from the village of Montgomery. And specifically, what the letter asks for is an intergovernmental agreement with Sugar Grove Township for the continued maintenance of Creekview Road, at least until such time as Creekview Road is extended as part of the development of the adjacent property. This has gone before the township board. We have not taken action because there is not yet an intergovernmental agreement, but it seemed that everyone would be in favor of that. And our highway commissioner, who just spoke, is willing to take responsibility for all of Creekview Drive, even the extended part, and that's what such an agreement would cover. So you have some support from the township as well. Thank you.
Thank you, clerk. All right, is there additional public comment? Come on up.
Hi there. My name is Brian Felston. I live in Aurora on 919 Honeysuckle Lane. It's just a little bit north of Jericho on Orchard, or just adjacent to Orchard. The reason I'm here today is myself and a small group of my neighbors had received information about the ready-mix factory that they're looking at rezoning. And my understanding, I've done a little bit of research over it over the course of the last 24 hours, is that the byproducts that factories like the ready-mix plant are really bad. They leave dust in the air, it travels very easily, it stays in the air, it lasts for days and days and days. The one thing I really wanted to ask, because I, I don't know this process very well, is if an environmental impact study can be done before this sort of zoning takes place. So, again, I don't know how it works, if it's something that happens before any sort of votes are taken, anything like that. I'd like to, you know, just on behalf of my immediate community, ask that something like that be done.
We'll comment on that. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks, Brian. Appreciate it. All right, any additional public comment? I don't want to cut anybody off. Okay.
I'd like to ask some questions.
Oh, there you go.
I'm Jerry Elliott with Sugar Grove Water Authority. I'd like to ask a question as to how you see your future water demand is going to be as you expand housing and various other business in, in this new project that you have going. So...
We can certainly...
I'm interested as to how much greater... I'm interested as to how much greater the water demand will be for the village, and where you will get the water.
Lake Michigan.
Thank you.
Thank you. We'll comment on that. Thanks, Jerry. While he's signing in, is there any other additional comment? Okay. Since I do intend to take action on these items this evening, I would like to address some of the comments right now before we get into the meat and potatoes of the meeting. I just would like to state my standpoint here. And I said this at the last meeting. I have no desire in any way to annex the subdivision, Creekview subdivision, to make it part of Montgomery in any way. I'm not even sure that it's possible for us to do something, or it's very hard to do that. Not our goal. As far as the multiple access points, all we're attempting to do is, none of us control Orchard and 30. I live just on the other side of Orchard and 30, in Orchard Prairie North subdivision. I drive this every single day, like everybody in this room. That intersection, that road, needs work. We've been screaming for it for better part of 10 years. Met with the IDOT secretary last Thursday and even talked about it. It wasn't the topic of the meeting, brought it up again. He's well aware of it. But like, I think it was Shannon stated, it's not in IDOT's plan yet, but we continue to scream about this. None of us control our destiny in that regard. Right now, their plan shows that you could continue to have a full access to get in and out of your subdivision, to keep making that left turn across 30 to go east. But nothing would prevent, in my opinion, IDOT from changing their mind prior to construction in 1, 5, 10, or 100 years, at which point you would have less than a full access. So all we're trying to do is provide options for you, for public safety. I'm not trying to, in any way, create a cut-through. If it has to just be a fire access, the village will determine that in the future. If it doesn't make sense to make the connection, and the IDOT road is done, then the village maybe doesn't have to do this. All we're planning for is a safe route in and out of your subdivision. There are two other subdivisions, like where, I think it was Brian lives, northeast of Jericho and Orchard, where their access to and from their development is tough because they can't go out on Orchard anymore because Kane County limited their access, right? So they came to us when we were doing our project with concerns about exiting. So what we're trying to do is provide additional options for you. Not trying to provide anybody else to get in there, just for ways for you guys to get out safely. But nothing is set in stone there. This gives us the option to pursue that in the future with this annexation. Another comment I wanted to make in regards to the Fire District and the TIF. Absent, I guess the value of the TIF here is that this property is subject to, as you all have seen, because of Blackberry Creek and the Montgomery overflow, and an immense amount of flooding, floodplain, floodway, wetlands, Army Corps-regulated, you know, Blackberry Creek. There are a lot of bricks on this property that would prevent much development beyond a mining operation, which the landowner could do now in the county. Absent any approval from us, they can go to the county, get the permit, and do that work. From day one, we had thought, if that's their desire anyway, I would much rather have them do it as part of the village, where we can have just a little bit more involvement in that process, in the approvals, in the regulation, as opposed to having the county's code enforcement officers handle that. Not to say anything bad about the county, we're on the ground here and can address any issues that come up. But absent a TIF on this site, tiffing this flood property, we believe, and the TIF report talks about, very little of this, or any of it, would ever develop. So we'd get the mining, we'd get nothing else. That would serve nothing for your future tax base. I realize that there is a squeeze on the Fire District initially, and it is 1% of your district, and you will have to provide service to this, and I'm respectful of that. And anything that's unique, and we're allowed to use TIF dollars, like we talked about, we're certainly open to that, to reimburse you for that. But absent a TIF, none of this would develop. So in 23 years, that's the maximum life of TIF, none of this would have ever developed. And what we're trying to do is look beyond the immediate and lower the tax base for all of Village Montgomery residents, increase opportunities for residential, if it happens there, or commercial, or jobs in the manufacturing area. So we're trying to look beyond the immediate into the far-off future of what the village could be. And we've put in a bunch of regulations here to make sure that some of the less, I should say, some of the more impactful uses, like the heavy industrial, has been eliminated from the zoning on the industrial parcel there. They've agreed not to have that be allowed as an allowable use, heavy industrial. So we're doing, what we're doing here is trying to ensure that the future, beyond 20 years, looks brighter for all of our taxing bodies, all the village and the village residents. Does anybody else have anything additional?
I would just like to add a couple of comments. Currently, the land sits in unincorporated Kane County. It's zoned as farmland. In the Kane County Comprehensive Plan, it is zoned industrial. So if, as we annex this, it's now zoned, they have the mining use, which they can do regardless. They don't need to come into the Village of Montgomery to do the mining. They can do it right now, as President Brawley said. But currently, in the Comprehensive Plan for Kane County, this is zoned industrial. It could get a lot worse than a mining sand and gravel and a ready-mix plant. They, this is a back-and-forth, and they're, they've worked with us to provide commercial and retail parcels, which the residents on the west side have said that they want. They want development, commercial and retail development. They want restaurants and things to go. So it's, the gravel and sand mining is going to happen regardless if it's in the village or not.
Yeah, there's one comment that I forgot to make. I was going to ask Pete, if you could respond to the Sugar Grove Water Authority, just on the future of our water supply and whether or not we've planned for this site to be included in that?
Right. So the, a couple of things. Montgomery, the long-term plan for Montgomery is to convert to Lake Michigan water, so that's going to be the ultimate source for the village. That unincorporated property was factored into the projections because it's within the village's planning area. So for the Lake Michigan allocation, it's included in their request. In the interim, until the village receives Lake Michigan water, will, the village will be providing water from their current water supply, which is primarily deep sandstone wells with a few shallow wells.
Thank you. All right, anybody else from the board have comments, responses? Staff? Anything that I skipped? Okay. All right, then we'll move on from public comment into the consent agenda. I'll read the items and then entertain a motion for approval. We have minutes of the May 22 Village Board Meeting, executive session minutes of May 22, accounts payable through June 12, accounts receivable for May of '23, the building report for May of '23, and the water production report for May of '23.
So moved.
Moving in second by Betzinger. Go ahead and call the roll.
Trustee Marisak?
Yes.
Trustee Betzinger?
Yes.
Trustee Guyer?
Yes.
Trustee Spurling?
Yes.
Trustee Youngerman?
Yes.
And that carries five to zero. Thank you. All right, moving on. Item for separate action. The first item, all of these, the next several. I would like to do the next four before we jump into some of the TIF stuff, which I know Trustee Guyer had a question on. The first one is Item A, Ordinance 2011, authorizing the execution of an annexation agreement between the Village of Montgomery and GH Farms LLC, 5H LLC, approximately 250 acres north of US Route 30 and west of Orchard Road. This is the second reading. Does staff have anything additional at this time?
I would just relay that at the last meeting, the petitioner did withdraw their request for the special use for fulfillment center and outdoor storage on Parcel Eight. So that has been specifically removed from the annexation agreement before you.
Thank you. Any comments, questions for the petitioner? And this is an annexation agreement, so we need 2/3 of the majority of the board? Yeah.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Moving in second. Any further discussion from the board?
Trustee, Trustee Marisak?
Yes.
Trustee Betzinger?
Yes.
Trustee Guyer?
Yes.
Trustee Spurling?
Yes.
Trustee Youngerman?
Yes.
And I vote yes as well. If you can note that. All right, the second item, B, is Ordinance 2012, annexing property, approximately 250 acres north of US Route 30, west of Orchard Road. This is second reading. This is to be approved by a simple majority of the board. Anything from staff?
Nothing additional.
All right.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Moving in second. Any further discussion from the board?
Trustee Marisak?
Yes.
Trustee Betzinger?
Yes.
Trustee Guyer?
Yes.
Trustee Spurling?
Yes.
Trustee Youngerman?
Yes.
That one carries five to zero. Thank you. Item C is Ordinance 2013, rezoning property, the same property at the approximately 250 acres north of US Route 30, west of Orchard Road, second reading. This does require all of the trustees to vote in favor. Anything from, additional from staff?
Nope, you got it covered.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Yeah.
Sorry.
Real quick, there's been a motion and a second discussion.
The 10-year prior to residential, when does that clock tick?
Upon execution of the annexation agreement and recording it.
Thank you.
Okay, go ahead and call the roll.
Trustee Marisak?
Yes.
Trustee Betzinger?
Yes.
Trustee Guyer?
Yes.
Trustee Spurling?
Yes.
Trustee Youngerman?
Yes.
And that carries five to zero. Thank you. Item D, Ordinance 2014, granting a special use for a planned unit development. This is NGH LLC and 5H LLC, second reading. This again is 2/3 of the village trustees, so all five of you. Anything from staff?
Again, similar to the annexation agreement, this ordinance was updated to remove the special use for Parcel Eight specifically, related to the fulfillment center and outdoor storage. So that is not included in the ordinance before you.
Thank you.
So moved.
Second.
Any further discussion? Go ahead.
Trustee Youngerman?
Yes.
Trustee Marisak?
Yes.
Trustee Betzinger?
Yes.
Trustee Guyer?
Yes.
Trustee Spurling?
Yes.
That carries five to zero. Thank you. Okay. The next three are TIF-related. I know Trustee Guyer had a question.
My question is with Parcel Eight. Everything north of that, obviously, is floodplain, and it qualifies for the TIF. My concern is Parcel Eight, I don't believe is on its own TIF-eligible. We heard from the petitioner that, you know, the retention is going to be on-site. That is not in the floodplain. There's a small portion in the northeast corner that is in the 500-year floodplain. But on its own, that parcel can be developed without TIF assistance. I don't believe it applies for the BUT4 article of TIF, where it states BUT4 the TIF, this parcel cannot be developed. The, you know, leaving that parcel out of the TIF also would allow the tax dollars generated within that TIF, the property tax dollars, to remain with the taxing bodies and not go into the TIF. And that's just my thoughts on Parcel Eight and the TIF as a whole. Again, I'm fine with everything north of that. It's just this one parcel I don't believe should be included in the TIF.
Gotcha.
Yeah, and just to clarify, Trustee Guyer, Parcel Eight, for purposes of this agreement, was created, but it's not actually a standalone parcel. So when you're looking at the TIF study, it's part of a larger parcel. So we're separating it out for purposes of zoning, but right now, it is part of that larger parcel.
Correct.
Which is why it qualifies under the study.
Yeah, I appreciate that, and I understand that, but we know what we're going to do there. We're not going to, you know, we're going to subdivide it. We're going to put the road in, just going to, you know, separate it from the rest of the parcel. We're going to allow B2 there, and then age-restricted thereafter. So it's, and again, that parcel on its own is, would not be TIF-eligible. I'm kind of thinking, no, we've just annexed in the property, we just did the zoning, you know, it's going to happen. That's going to be a standalone parcel. I just don't feel comfortable including that parcel in the TIF.
Gotcha. Tony?
So, I mean, I will just reiterate that this is looking at these parcels as they stand. And even within the TIF ordinance, not every single parcel within a TIF district has to meet the BUT4 requirements, but when you look at it in totality, so, and we're looking at this, this is only 10% of the total development. So in that way, our consultant and myself, I don't feel that we're in any issue of not meeting the requirements for the TIF eligibility for this property, either that parcel specific or the 250 acres in totality.
Right. Yeah, I understand. And like I said, everything north of this, I'm fine with. It's a mess, it's all in the floodplain. Before the TIF, it will never be developed. Ockit Road extension will never happen. You know, if the petitioner came in to us and said, "This parcel, we want to annex into the village", and they subdivided it, they annexed it into the village, and then they said, "Oh, and we want a TIF designation", on its own, it would not, it would not require for TIF designation. It's just being considered because it's part of the larger, whole part of the parcel. You know, if, the other thing is, you know, the question I have is, I know that you can expand a TIF. So if we were to exclude this parcel from the TIF now, could we, at a later date, include it? If something were going to happen on there that would be requiring TIF-eligible funds?
So the, I don't know if you have...
I don't know that there may be a way to do that, but that is another involved process that would be required to go through there, to re-add it to the, to the TIF district.
Yeah, I just...
Again, it is part of a larger PIN, so you couldn't just exclude Parcel Eight because it's not its own parcel at this point in time. So right now, as the TIF stands, you'd have to exclude the entirety of the parcel, which the vast majority of it, I believe, is in the flood.
Right, right. Yeah, the vast majority of that parcel is, yeah, it's just...
Let's walk through it real quick. If, let's say we could, let's say we could lob off the bottom part of this and say, "That part, it's the high ground. It's the only part of that whole area that's developable at Griffin and 30." What we've done is made the rest of that parcel like zero likelihood of ever developing. So if you took it to the extreme, and we talked about this, and you carved out just floodplain on this property and included that in the TIF?
Yep.
And everything else was out? You would have no developable property because you have nothing that's above flood elevation. So anytime you're going to do comp storage or floodway work, you would, you need, you need high ground to massage the floodplain with. So thank goodness that some of this property is above flood elevation. Otherwise, a TIF really wouldn't do anything for it. It's just floodplain. So this would allow massaging of the area. I know the petitioner had a question or comment.
Excellent point that you bring up, but as the mayor, I think, just pointed out, we have some extraordinary costs in developing this land, Ockit Road and that bridge over the creek. Tremendous costs involved in doing that. And your recognition of the fact that, hey, here's a parcel that we can generate some dollars for is exactly the reason we need it in the TIF, because there's a good chance that that could develop sooner rather than later, which puts the increment into the TIF that allows us to then go ahead and put in those extraordinary costs that we've got for Ockit Road. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. All right. Any additional comments, follow-up? Did I state anything incorrectly?
Like a motion to approve?
Yes.
This is second reading?
Yes. So this is... Ordinance 2015, Item E. Approving the Blackberry Creek TIF District Redevelopment Plan Program, TIF Establishment, Established District. Second reading? And a motion?
Second.
Second? Any further discussion? Go ahead. Go ahead.
Trustee Marisak?
Yes.
Trustee Betzinger?
Yes.
Trustee Guyer?
No.
Trustee Spurling?
Yes.
Trustee Youngerman?
Yes.
That's four to one. The second one is ordinance 2016, Designating the Proposed Blackberry Creek Redevelopment Project Area, a redevelopment project area pursuant to the Tax Increment Allocation Redevelopment Act. Second reading. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Any further discussion?
Trustee Marisak?
Yes.
Trustee Betzinger?
Yes.
Trustee Guyer?
No.
Trustee Spurling?
Yes.
Trustee Youngerman?
Yes.
That carries four to one. Thank you. The last one is 2017, Adopting Tax Increment Allocation Financing for the Blackberry Creek Redevelopment Project Area. Second reading.
Second.
Any further discussion?
Trustee Marisak?
Yes.
Trustee Betzinger?
Yes.
Trustee Guyer?
No.
Trustee Spurling?
Yes.
Trustee Youngerman?
Yes.
That carries four to one. Thank you. All right. All of those items are complete. If you want to stick around for the rest of the meeting, if you're here for that, that's fine. If you want to leave, we won't be offended. Okay, we'll move on to item H tonight is ordinance 2023, Approving Final Platte Subdivision for Caris Center for Commerce, Unit 1, Village of Montgomery, Illinois. We do have this on for waiver of first reading, passage on the second. If the board feels comfortable doing so tonight, we're certainly under no obligation to do so. Staff?
Yes, so a few months back, we approved the rezoning and preliminary PUD and preliminary plat for the Caris Center for Commerce. This is the 204 acres that is the shearing property out there kitty-corner from what we were just talking about. So they have come to us with their final platte subdivision, and this is for Unit 1. So this would be creating the southern site lot that is for the future Ravago. So this, Unit 1, is in substantial compliance with the preliminary plat. And we are recommending approval of it with conditions that they will have to meet before we recorded or get stormwater permits issued for it. So looking for final approval of the plat by the village engineers. A few small changes that need to be made. Approval of the final engineering before the issuance of a site work or stormwater permit. Agreement with the adjacent property owner for a stormwater drainage prior to the issuance of site work or stormwater permit. And then also provision of a temporary access easement for emergency services between lots 1 and 2. Lot 2 is the remainder of the properties. That would be the northern site. So there is proposed for temporary access to go through. There's, there'd be two ways in and out for emergency services. And that easement could then be vacated once the northern site develops and other accesses are created, so.
Thank you. Does the petitioner have anything to add? Welcome.
Hi, good evening. My name is Betsy Gates Alfred. I'm the attorney for the petitioner. Just wanted to briefly introduce myself. We also have Jacob Caramal from DSI, who's the general contractor here tonight. And we have some other members of our team joining by Zoom, Jake Finley from Caris, Danielle Castle, who's Ravago's attorney, and then Bill Bone, who is from Jacob and Heffner, the project engineer. So we're happy to, you know, address any questions you might have about the project, and we appreciate your consideration of it for tonight. We also do appreciate your consideration of it for waiver of first reading. Caris and Ravago are planning to try and close on the purchase of the property later this month. And we understand that your second meeting this month is planned to be canceled. So that was why we were asking for that accommodation for waiver of first reading on these items. So, thanks.
Thank you. Okay. Questions from the board?
Like a motion?
Sure.
Motion to approve?
And this is to...
Our second.
Thank you.
This is item H.
Right. This is the waiver of the first reading, passage on the second reading. Okay. Any objection to that? All right, go ahead and call roll.
Trustee Marisak?
Yes.
Trustee Betzinger?
Yes.
Trustee Guyer?
Yes.
Trustee Spurling?
Yes.
And Trustee Youngerman?
Yes.
That carries five to zero. Thank you. Second item is ordinance 2024, Granting the Final PUD Plan Approval for this project. Waiver of first passage on the second. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion or anything from staff? Okay, go ahead.
Trustee Marisak?
Yes.
Trustee Betzinger?
Yes.
Trustee Guyer?
Yes.
Trustee Spurling?
Yes.
Trustee Youngerman?
Yes.
That carries five to zero. Thank you. Okay. The next several, I think, we'll talk about all at once. I think it's the next four, if I'm reading this quickly. So I'll read, I don't want to read all of them twice, but it's for the annexation of the Light Road property. Go ahead, Sonya.
Um, yes. So as you may recall, again, with the Caris development, there's a small farmette located there at the south end of the property that was under separate ownership. They have purchased that property and are looking to annex it into the village and consolidate it with that southern site, so the lot 1 that we just approved. So they are asking for annexation, rezoning to M2, and for the PUD ordinance to be amended to include that parcel as part of the southern site. The PUD did not initially include it. So this would add it in and add it as part of that southern site piece and approve the use on there. So the Planning and Zoning Commission held their public hearing on June 1st and did recommend approval. We do have a few conditions for the approvals for the annexation, rezoning, and amendment primarily related to abandoning the existing well in Septic and getting the necessary permits related to that, getting the demolition permit, and obviously annexing it to the Fox Metro Water Reclamation District.
Is the, the existing rail crossing going to be eliminated as part of this, then?
The existing rail crossing, Light Road is technically under our jurisdiction on that side of the track, so we will need to work with the NSF and the petitioner and related to getting that closed off.
But the, okay. And so the plan is not to continue using it?
Correct.
To access. Okay. That's what I thought.
I have a question related to that because I know that a resident of, I think, on the other side is Oswego, had reached out about a quiet study, and I, Mark, you and I have talked about this. As part of this, do you guys plan on abandoning that, that crossing? Can that crossing be eliminated so no quiet zone is needed and it solves their issues?
Yes, you mean in terms of a traffic quiet zone was the concern?
As far as a train with the horn?
I see. So the crossing is proposed by the petitioner to be eliminated. We wouldn't propose any access from that side. As to the quiet zone, we have the project engineer, Mr. Bone, is on the line if he might be able to address any more technical questions about the plans.
So, so by default, the elimination of the crossing would eliminate need for a quiet zone. They will no longer sound the horn. So it ultimately works itself out by the elimination process.
Thank you.
Thank you.
The resident, they can always continue to blow their horns wherever they need to, right? Yeah. Which we know that from downtown.
And they do.
Yes. Okay.
Motion to accept the recommendation from Planning and Zoning Commission?
Second.
PCC 2023-005, item J. There's been a motion and a second. Any further discussion?
Trustee Marisak?
Yes.
Trustee Betzinger?
Yes.
Trustee Guyer?
Yes.
Trustee Spurling?
Yes.
Trustee Youngerman?
Yes.
That carries five to zero. Item K is ordinance 2018, Annexing the Property 5500 Light Road. Waiver of first passage on the second.
So moved.
Second.
Moved second. Any discussion? Call roll.
Trustee Marisak?
Yes.
Trustee Betzinger?
Yes.
Trustee Guyer?
Yes.
Trustee Spurling?
Yes.
Trustee Youngerman?
Yes.
Thank you. That carries. Item L, Ordinance 2019, Rezoning Property at 5500 Light Road. Waiver of first passage on the second.
So moved.
Second.
Moved in second. Call roll.
Trustee Marisak?
Yes.
Trustee Betzinger?
Yes.
Trustee Guyer?
Yes.
Trustee Spurling?
Yes.
Trustee Youngerman?
Yes.
That's five to zero. Thank you. And the last one, item M, Ordinance 2020, Amending a Special Use for PUD. This is for Caris Center for Commerce. Waiver of first passage on the second.
So moved.
Second.
Go ahead.
Trustee Youngerman?
Yes.
Trustee Marisak?
Yes.
Trustee Betzinger?
Yes.
Trustee Guyer?
Yes.
Trustee Spurling?
Yes.
That passes as well. Thank you. Appreciate it. Okay, our next four are all Cooper's Hawk related. So we'll discuss them at one time and then we'll take, take some votes. This is Recommendation of Planning Commission, Special Use, Liquor License, and then the Economic Development Incentive Agreement. And you're leaving.
All right. Well, we have the petitioners here, and they have a presentation they can go through on what their proposal is, but the Planning and Zoning Commission did recommend approval of their special use and their variances. So I'm just going to move over to their presentation so they can find that. One second, I want to make sure their team is all able to speak. That's everybody, right?
Two jumpers and Lauren.
Hi. My name, my name's Jen. Can you hear me?
Oh, hi. Yes, sorry, Jen.
It's okay. Lauren, I think Lauren or Mark are on the, on the line. I'll let them handle the presentation and the zoning items. I'm here and available to discuss the liquor license classification.
Hello, I'm Mark O'Henley with Artia Group Architects, the architects for Cooper's Hawk. And online is Lauren Williams with Cooper's Hawk, and she's going to present this presentation. And then I'm available to discuss any of the, if you have any questions on the variances and the special use that we've submitted.
Thank you.
Thanks, Mark and Jen. We can flip to the next slide and...
So she can talk?
Can you hear me?
I can hear you. This is Jennifer, though.
Oh, yeah. Good. Just have to make sure they can...
If you, Jennifer, if you are speaking, we cannot hear you.
This is Jennifer. Can you, can, can you hear me or no?
I don't think they can hear any of us virtually. Yeah, I can hear you all, but...
Is it not going through to City Hall?
Must be, must not be. Must not be. And the chat's disabled, so we can't tell them.
Close the presentation. Maybe that cuts off the, maybe close that for a minute. I don't know.
It says over here that the chat's disabled. Yeah.
Okay. Anyone from the village hear any of us? The chat's disabled?
Yeah.
Lauren, can you hear us?
We can hear you. Can you hear us?
I'm assuming that's a yes since you lit up, but we can't hear you.
Yeah, I can hear you. Yeah, I don't know how to communicate. Yeah, Mark might have to cover it.
Is there anybody there?
No. Mark's on mine too, right? No, Mark's in person. Oh.
Perfect.
I'm on.
Yeah, maybe turn up the laptop and then maybe there's something in, maybe somebody go in the back room and just start turning all the controls around.
That's a good idea.
There we go.
Lauren, can you hear us?
I can hear you, yeah. I can hear you perfectly fine. Can they hear me or no? They're laughing at my joke. I don't think so. I think they're laughing at me enough. Yeah, they must be.
Can you get ahold of Mark, who's there?
Hello? Um, I mean, I doubt that he would be looking at his phone.
Are video monitors on?
No, I don't, I don't know.
We're getting close.
We're getting there.
We can hear you in the back room about 40 feet away, so...
Oh, okay. Well, that's good.
You just woke up our staff member back there. There you go. He just, he's holding a microphone in front of it.
Okay.
Yeah, the chat was disabled, so we can't tell you that we can hear ourselves talking. We just can't hear you.
Yeah.
Yeah, so you can turn the, I think you can turn the laptop off, can't you? I guess not, since we can't hear them anymore. Can't hear them anymore. Lost it.
Lost it again?
So it's a good time to point out that we have done this before, and this has never happened. Yeah, there you go. Do that.
All right, Lauren, I just promoted you to panelist. Can you speak and see if you, we can hear you now?
Lauren?
Who?
Oh, there we go. Hi.
Oh, we got you now.
And we can see.
Awesome. Hi.
Welcome.
So we'll just wait.
Yeah, she's adding everybody else as a panelist. Maybe that'll work.
Okay.
It's really good that we didn't have to take public comment on this tonight.
Same on us. We're not coming in person, I guess, this time.
Okay. Let's... We'll try share screen again. See if we can't make some magic happen. Uh huh. You have to check the lot share sound. When you say share screen, share screen at the bottom, you have to check the lot shares bottom. All right.
Okay.
Let's try that again. Share screen. Oh, yeah. Share sound.
So now, can you hear us?
Yes.
Okay. And it's really hard to hear you, but, what, can I start? Should I start?
Yes, go ahead. So you can see the PowerPoint there?
Yeah.
Okay, go ahead.
Yeah.
You muted yourself there.
Yeah, sorry about that. Can you hear me now? All right. Hi, I'm Lauren Williams. Sorry about all the trouble. I guess lessons learned for coming in person. I'm the Senior Design Manager for Cooper's Hawk. Also with us there in person is Mark O'Henley from Art Architects Group. We have Jen Lingle, who's within the development team with me at Cooper's Hawk, and Jennifer Gallery, who's our liquor license attorney as well. So we're all here to kind of speak on behalf of this project. But I'm going to start on the front end, just talking a little bit about Cooper's Hawk and who we are. So if you could advance the slide for me, that'd be great. Is Mark there to advance the slide?
Yeah, we're trying.
Okay. Okay, great.
Tap.
And so this is Tim McHenry. It's his fancy picture. He is a pretty easygoing guy. So he's our founder, and he's still the CEO of the company. It's founded in 2005. And I think this quote, these are nice bullet points about us that are great, but this quote kind of sums it up for me. And he says, "Cooper's Hawk started in 2005 as a great idea." So he's saying, "To combine food and wine into a one-stop shop. What emerged from that idea was a passionate community that has grown..." What emerged from that idea was a passionate community that has grown us to heights we could never imagine. And I think that speaks a lot to it. So this wine club that is over 500,000 members now has just like infused this awesome lifestyle brand to the point where we get to do really cool things in our jobs, like create new restaurant concepts, one of which we're rolling out in Oak Brook, which is Piccolo Buco, it came from Rome. And we're looking into other areas to grow that brand as well, as well as many other ideas that keep popping up. I see someone gesturing, can everybody hear okay and everything?
Yes.
Okay. So that's a little bit about sort of how we started, and we can go to the next slide, please. All right, food program, so it's modern American cuisine, the food is delicious. I've worked for a couple of other brands before, I never ever liked the food as much as I like the food here. We care about people, so we try to have a menu that has some allergen exceptions. We have a gluten-free menu, we have some seasonally-inspired Chef Rex, and we have a life balance menu as well. We can go to the next one. Our wine program, so we, our wine facility is here in Illinois, it's in Woodridge, and it makes a ton of wine. We source those juices from all over the world now. So we have Italian blends, we have Australian blends, all over the place, so, super cool. I'm in development, so I don't know all about it, but I do drink it and it is delicious. And there are many, many to choose from, and the cool part about it is that it kind of ranges from, if you've never had wine before ever, entry-level wines, all the way to some of our wines, like the Camille series, that have like a more robust flavor for palates that are a little bit more established. So we kind of have that easy accessibility in, and you can grow and learn with us as you continue to evolve on your sort of wine journey. Let me go to the next one. So the tasting room and the retail program, so we have a wonderful person in the office down in Downers Grove that sort of curates all of our retail items. So it's a special collection of glasses, seasonally-inspired. We think of ourselves as like the connoisseur, so if there's a wine opener, that's the best wine opener, you're gonna be able to find it as a gift to give or buy for yourself in our retail room. Also, as you come in, there's usually a forty to fifty linear foot tasting bar with our, our attendants there to teach you a little bit about wine. And, and that's a super fun thing. So you can come to the wine, the tasting room to try wines, or you can use it as a way to kind of wait for your table as well, so lots of ways to interact with our, in our tasting room. Okay, head to the next one. And so this slide is a little outdated because we're growing so fast. So we actually have fifty-six high-volume locations in eleven states now, Arizona being our most recent market that we entered. And it happened so fast, it happened right before COVID hit, and we opened four restaurants since then. So really fun market to get into. We have Gilbert, Arizona, that we just opened. Middleton and Algonquin are under construction right now, and Wellington will start construction in a little bit here. So lots of fun growth, thank you. Site impact, so each restaurant, it employs around 150 people, which is awesome for the communities. And what's like probably more mentionable about that is that we have good employee retention. People like to stay and grow with the company. Many, many of the people that work within the RSC have been with the company for a long time, Jen Lingle being one of them. She's, I think, been with the company for, I don't know, twelve years, I don't know, it's a long time. And on average, we do sales of about nine to ten million dollars per restaurant. We like to merge with local vendors, so when we can, we source things locally as well within the communities we serve. We also love to cool, bring in cool artists and engage with the community in that way, in our art packages within, within our buildings. We see about four to five thousand guests a week. And like I mentioned, we've got a really humongous wine club, potentially the biggest in the world. I don't know if there is another one that, that has the size to it, and it keeps growing. Hours of operation, we're open from Monday through Thursday, eleven to nine, and Friday through Saturday, eleven to ten, Sunday, eleven to nine PM, and last call's about an hour after the last person is sat.
Can you go back into the light?
And then, I think we can, I think there's somebody that needs to get on you. And then, this is our site plan, and Mark, let me know when you want to jump in. Is there some components you want to talk to as it relates to the variants?
Yeah, so as we get that situated, this just real quick is a site plan to orient where the proposed restaurant's at. So at the corner of Higden Avenue and Route Thirty is where the Cooper's Hawk's being proposed. It's a freestanding building, single-story. We'll jump to a floor plan. Maybe. Oh, this one? Gotcha, thank you. So just real quick trip through the, through the store. Our main entry's down here. As Lauren mentioned, when you come into the restaurant, we have a tasting area. So you can come in, you can purchase wine, taste different wines. You can come in and just do that as your experience, or you can do that as you wait for a table in the bar, which is kind of back here. Or if you want to come and eat, there's a main dining room here. In between those areas is the restrooms. Off the dining room is a private dining room, which also acts as overflow dining on busy nights. The patio that's part of our special use request is off the bar, so it's back in this corner. Which... See if I can do this. There we go. So back in this corner is the proposed patio, just again, also located here, just to orient yourself on the site. And then our exterior elevations, this is our proposed main entry. So we've got a large glass gabled roof, just to kind of help accent where the entry is on the restaurant. We're proposing concrete-looking Eiffel panels along with metal panel, some standing seam metal and some wood look, fiber cement board, so... I don't know if you caught during Lauren's presentation, but Cooper's Hawk's kind of a Napa Valley-inspired restaurant concept. So we try to use elements from Napa Valley and work it into local context of the sites. Each store's different, so Montgomery will have its own unique exterior design. A lot of the floor plans, there's elements that, there's elements that work for them at the kitchen and bar that, you know, carry from restaurant to restaurant, but the exterior are all different. So it's kind of a nice part of the Cooper's Hawk experience. This was a presentation just for our transparency breakdown that we're proposing to have a little less than what's required in the development code. And part of that is just where the exterior walls are in relation to the plan. So the restrooms, you know, obviously don't have windows, some of the back house spaces as well. And then just some three-D views of the proposed building. So again, this is the main entry with a glass gabled roof area. Kind of walk around the building. This area here is that private dining room we saw in the plan. A proposed patio with the special use. And then, there's our finishes. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anybody else from your team that intends to speak?
Can you hear me? This is Jennifer Gallery.
Yeah, I think with the liquor license, there's Jennifer, and Jennifer will speak to that. But if there's any questions on the special use or the variants request with materials, I can help with that.
Okay, perfect. It kind of makes sense in my mind to discuss all of them before we take action. So that's the special use and the variances. So that's a recommendation and the ordinance. The second ordinance is the creation of a new class, T liquor license. Staff, did you want to give a summary of that?
Yes, with the business model for Cooper's Hawk, we have packaged liquor sales happening within this, within the restaurant. We also have, obviously, the restaurant with the serving of, of a full-service liquor, beer and wine. Then we also have the tasting bar. Unfortunately, within our code, we don't have really something that addresses being able to have like daily regular tastings within there. So we felt the creation of a new liquor license class was the way to go to accommodate this particular use. So we're proposing a new class T, which would be specifically for a restaurant with a wine club and allows for the wine tasting bar and the retail wine area. Allows for the retail sale of wine in original packages, not for consumption on-site, and the retail sale of alcoholic beverages for consumption on the premises within the restaurant. The class T is similar to the class G in that the restaurant must drive more than 50% of its revenue on an annual basis from the sale of food, and the license holder would be required to comply with any and all other applicable state laws as it relates to tastings and things like that. So we are proposing the new, the fee for this new classification to be $1,750. We feel this is in line with our class G and some of our other licenses. So this would be kind of a, kind of a three-in-one license. So rather than just have it at the flat class G rate, add a little bit extra to accommodate the other two license classes that are being coupled with that. So that is the liquor license class, and what you have before you would just be creating that class. It wouldn't be creating the license yet for that one until they're ready to submit their application for that liquor license.
Got it, so we're creating the class T, currently there will be zero available until they apply for one. The one question I had about that was the, the 50% of the revenues must be generated from food. This is a question directly for Cooper's Hawk. Is there any concern about being able to do that? That's, that comes from our class G liquor license, which we have for restaurants? Have you, as staff, had any conversation, or does anybody from Cooper's Hawk have any comments?
My recollection, when I spoke with Sonia, this is Jennifer Gallery, was a sales figure of 50%, only dealt with the on-premise sale components. To clarify a couple of things, the wine that's, the, the package component of the Cooper's Hawk model only applies to its private label wines. Cooper's Hawk doesn't make its own wine. Winery that Lauren spoke about is not owned by Cooper's Hawk. It's owned by a third party, but there are private label agreements to make specific Cooper's Hawk branded wines. So part of the business model is to sell the Cooper's Hawk wines for both on-premise consumption along with beer and distilled spirits, but the, the, the package component is only with regards to its private label wines. And my understanding, even speaking with Sonia, is that the 50% food requirement is only applicable to the on-premise operation. At the wine club sales and the retail sales of wine don't go into that computation. So that's, I was told by my, my group that that was okay with them. If that's the case, and if not, then maybe some tweaking of the ordinance is in order, but that was my understanding. Jen Lingle, if I'm wrong, let me know.
Right, so my general understanding would be that the restaurant portion, that those revenues cannot exceed 50% for the restaurant portion of it. When we're looking at the, the retail package sales, we're looking at that kind of separately from the restaurant model within there.
And the question I had for staff was, do you know if the, the point of sale for the, for the wine club, does that occur here? So if I join the wine club, am I paying sales tax to Montgomery? Or is that point of sale somewhere else?
The, the, the wine club members that are, there are different pla, it depends what you're signed up to. You have an option of picking it up at the store or having it delivered. So if your store designation is Montgomery, then this, all the sales for wine club members that are tied to the Montgomery location will be billable sales and tax sales in Montgomery. A wine club member in Florida, for example, wouldn't, you know, the revenue would be allocable to, to that respective state. So the, the members that come out of Montgomery, those sales will be reported and taxed in, as if the sale was made in Montgomery.
Got it. And if I'm a Montgomery resident and I buy it online, that tax still comes here?
Correct. Because that will be post, that, that would be, the sale would be posted by the Montgomery store and it would be deemed a retail sale for the Montgomery store. And as a member, you could have it delivered to your home or pick it up at the store.
Got it, okay. I don't see an issue either way, I'm just trying to clarify. There are no issue to me. Okay.
Yeah, most wine club members, we have found, pick up at the store because they either go there to have dinner, or they also have the option of seeing what the offering is for the particular one. They could change out wines, they could sample it before they take it home. So I think a, a majority of the wine club members who live in an area where there is a restaurant elect to pick it up at the store.
Okay. Thank you. Questions from the board on the class T liquor license? Okay. All right, let's discuss Q, which is ordinance 2025, this is the economic development incentive agreement. Sonia?
Um, yes, so Cooper's Hawk came to us with a request for economic incentives for their new restaurant in town. They are estimating that their investment in the building of the new restaurant would be about eight million dollars. They're projecting their annual sales to be seven to eight million dollars annually for this location. And as they said previously, they're creating approximately 150 jobs for this location. The attached incentive agreement that we worked on mimics our other sales tax rebates agreement where it steps over five years, so it'd be a fifteen, fifteen-year agreement. For the first five years, it would be a seventy-five, twenty-five split. Seventy-five going to Cooper's Hawk, twenty-five being retained by the village. Years six through ten, we'd have fifty-fifty split. And then for the remaining five years, 25% would go to the developer, 75% would be retained by the village. And this agreement does have an overall cap of $750,000. So the agreement would either end when we hit the $750,000 or at the fifteen-year mark. Based on the provided sales revenue estimates, over the fifteen-year period, the village would collect approximately $600,000 in sales tax revenue. Additionally, the incentive agreement does not include our non-home rule sales tax. So our non-home rule sales tax funds our IRP program as well as our property tax rebate program. So over the fifteen-year period, that 1% non-home rule sales tax would collect 1.2 million dollars based on their projected annual sales for non-home rule sales tax revenues. The village would also be collecting that in full.
Okay, I just had a quest, one question on that. The, the seven to eight million dollars annually that Cooper's Hawk estimates to be generated? Seven to eight?
Seven to eight million is what they gave us, yes.
Is that, does that include the package, the wine club stuff we just talked about? What is, what goes into that seven to eight million dollar estimate?
It includes all, all, all revenue that is booked to the Montgomery store, so...
Can you state that one more time?
Wine club members from Montgomery, they buy wine from there, it goes towards the revenue from the Montgomery store.
Got it. So if you, if you purchase from the, just like we talked about, if you pick up at the store, that point of sale is here, that's included in the seven to eight million? Okay.
Yes.
Okay. Any additional questions?
I have a comment. I struggle with the sales tax incentive for a business whose biggest struggle will be keeping up with their reservations once they open their door. I, I find that a three-quarter million dollar sales tax incentive to be exceptionally generous, and I am not in favor of that kind of volume discounting for a business. In my opinion, sales tax incentive is to help a business, especially in the restaurant industry, who may or may not have a chance of surviving 12 months, 24 months, 36 months. And we've done that for a couple of other businesses in town at about 20% of this level. This is just something I'm not comfortable with.
Understood. Any additional comments? Okay, anything else from staff or the petitioner? Okay.
But we appreciate your time.
I'm sorry?
I just said no, but we do appreciate your time and, and hearing us. Thank you.
No problem. Okay, we'll run through these and take action. We can also discuss if it's your pleasure. Item N is recommendation of planning zoning commission for PZC 2023-004 special use and variances on lot two of Ogden Hill, Cooper's Hawk.
So moved, second.
Moved in second, any discussion? Go ahead.
Trustee Marisak?
Yes.
I'm sorry, trustee Marisak?
Yes.
Trustee Betzinger?
Yes.
Trustee Guyer?
Yes.
Trustee Spurling?
Yes.
Trustee Youngerman?
Yes.
And that carries five to zero. Ordinance O is, or O is ordinance 2021 granting a special use for outdoor dining and variations from sections eight and 12 of the village's UDO for lot two Ogden Hill, Cooper's Hawk.
So moved. Second.
And this is waiver first, passage on the second, if everybody's comfortable.
Trustee Marisak?
Yes.
Trustee Betzinger?
Yes.
Trustee Guyer?
Yes.
Trustee Spurling?
Yes.
Trustee Youngerman?
Yes.
And that passes five to zero. Item P is ordinance 2022 amending the village code section 3-7, creation of a new liquor, of a new class T liquor license for a restaurant with a wine club. Waiver first, passage on the second.
So moved. Second.
Go ahead.
Trustee Marisak?
Yes.
Trustee Betzinger?
Yes.
Trustee Guyer?
Yes.
Trustee Spurling?
Yes.
Trustee Youngerman?
Yes.
That also passes five to zero. Last item, Q, ordinance 2025 authorizing an economic development incentive agreement between the village of Montgomery and Cooper's Hawk Montgomery LLC. Waiver first, passage on the second.
So moved.
Second.
Any further discussion? Go ahead.
Trustee Youngerman?
Yes.
Trustee Marisak?
Yes.
Trustee Betzinger?
No.
Trustee Guyer?
Yes.
Trustee Spurling?
Yes.
And that carries four to one, thank you. All right, thank you folks, appreciate it.
Thank you.
I'll roll right into the last item for separate action, PSA with EEI in the amount of $46,986 for the design engineering for baseline road resurfacing STP.
Thank you, President Valley. So the village received a grant through the King Kendall Council of Mayors for funding for the baseline resurfacing project to take place in fiscal year, or I'm sorry, excuse me, candle, calendar year 2024. As part of that project, 75% of the cost share for the construction and construction engineering fees can be applied for the, to the grant. However, the preliminary design and design work is not part of that. That's the sole responsibility of the village to pay for. So therefore, that is why we're proposing the PSA tonight for $46,986 to engineering enterprises to complete that. The target is in April letting of 2024 for this project to take place. So performing the engineering and design work now will allow us to hit that target for the letting date. If there's any questions, I'm happy to answer them at this time.
Any questions? I'm kidding. The, how much is the grant for at the council mayors?
I don't remember what the.
Yeah, I knew I'd get you with that one.
Yeah.
Got it. It doesn't matter, I was just curious. It's all right. We'll figure it out eventually. I appreciate staff actually being ahead on a lot of these things where we're gobbling up money that otherwise would go to another community in the council mayor. So thank you. All right, any questions?
Motion to approve. Second.
Go ahead. Yes.
Trustee Spurling?
Yes.
Trustee Youngerman?
Yes.
Trustee Marisak?
Yes.
Trustee Betzinger?
Yes.
That carries five to zero. We don't have anything set for discussion. Is there anything new or unfinished?
I have.
Well, go ahead, Pete. Do them both at the same time. Go ahead, I have four. I actually have four things. All right, let's rock and roll, go.
So number one, this Wednesday floral judging for beautification. We're not going to have a meeting, it'll just be floral judging at 5:30. We're going to meet here at the hall. The second thing is, I noticed in the packet tonight that last month, the building department issued 563 permits. There was 23 working days last month, so that's 25 permits a day. That's just phenomenal. I really appreciate all the hard work. I know that I've stopped in the hall a couple of times and the entire department is up at the front counter waiting on people and it's just a huge team effort and I appreciate that. The third one is, I haven't noticed any work lately at Orchard and 30. Do we have an update?
Give me one second, let me pull it up here.
They figured they were done.
Yeah.
Yep. That was my question, so I'm glad you asked.
So the anticipated completion for the project is around July 4th next week, which is actually this week. So I apologize, this was my notes from last Friday, late in the afternoon when I talked to the project engineer. Landscaping, they're going to be out to do, the county is going to allow them to do some diamond grinding on the areas, specifically in the turn lane when you're heading southbound to, to then go west on 30. They're going to allow them to try that to see if it's satisfactory. If it's not, then they'll to choose the traditional milling and resurfacing, which would then extend that target completion date. But at this time, that's what they're going to attempt to do. The signals are the waiting item right now. So they're waiting on the last mast arm to be delivered and shipped. So that's what's holding up, but they will be out, the electrical contractor will be out, I believe, next week to start pulling all the wire and getting the signal wiring ready for the shipment of those mast arms. And that is scheduled to deliver on the 19th is what they had in, in my notes. So that's where they stand with the project. Landscaping, again, taking place this week. I'm just trying to recap any other questions. There is a lot, going to be a lot of lane closures, so I will be working with Christina to try and put something out on social media with the diamond grinding and it is take, take up a pretty substantial width. So he did advise trying to post anything we can to help deter people from traveling that route and using an alternate, alternate route for the remainder of late this week and early next week.
Is this a 2021 model year mast arm?
I don't know, it's not our project.
Thanks, Mark.
Okay, the last time I have, I've talked to Jeff and Mark about this. I, it was brought to my attention and I wasn't aware of this, and I'll speak specifically to my neighborhood, is we have three basins in our neighborhood and we have a ditch line in our neighborhood as part of the basins. I wasn't aware until a couple of weeks ago that when Ryland closed out the subdivision, they did not transfer ownership to the village. They transferred ownership to the HOA. And those basins are covered under an SSA. So, you know, to date, from when it was transferred over, the village's contractor or contractors would maintain the basin and the areas and the right of ways and then charge it to the SSA. So the three basins are in the name of the HOA. The ditch line, the swell, is still in Ryland's name. So they felt this is something we should bring up to the board as a policy decision. My, my personal feeling is that any basins that are covered by an SSA should be owned by the village. I don't think that we want an HOA to, to own a basin that's an integral part of our stormwater management system. It's just, I, I just foresee problems with that. At the end of the day, if we tell the HOA, you own it, you have to maintain it and they decide, well, we're not going to do that, we're just going to maintain it and charge the SSA anyway. So I, I think it's more of a housekeeping item that we should look at any basins that are under the, in the village that are under an SSA and discuss having those transferred over to the village, the ownership. You know, Kyle Householder was here from the HOA the last meeting. And I've talked to him and he's talked to the board members and they would be agreeable to, to transferring those basins. I, I don't know how we get that ditch line that's in Ryland's name now transferred to the village. But, yeah.
I may be, I may be oversimplifying it, but if, if it is all covered by the SSA and we are levying to co, to cover the maintenance of that anyway, does the ownership matter? I mean, is there, do we have a compelling reason why we wouldn't want ownership? I know that most, a lot of villages are not like us and won't take ownership of those things, but since we have the SSAs and we do the maintenance of these anyway, do we, do we have objection to that? It seems like a lot of running around for something that didn't accomplish much in my mind.
Yeah, for most intents and purposes, it's not going to matter who has ownership as long as you do have that SSA and, you know, it's being levied, of course, you know, there's different positives and minuses of owning property versus we're seeing someone else own property. But yeah, overall, in the grand scheme of accomplishing, you know, what you need to do with regard to the management of the basins, there's not much of a difference.
Got it. And is the village? If I'm not mistaken, I'm sorry.
I was saying it would just be housekeeping to.
If I'm not mistaken, the village maintains all of the basins in town with the exception of Lakewood Creek.
There are private ownership, commercial properties that have their own basins that we do not have SSAs over. We're now enforcing and implementing backup SSAs in new developments, but there are existing developments where there are not backups or active SSAs. But for the majority of the residential developments, you're correct.
And the village doesn't own all of those parcels, I don't think. I don't know if they own the Orchard Prairie North one, but I know there's a bunch of outlots the HOA owns that the village maintains and is reimbursed by the SSA. I don't really think I have an objection either way. I just don't know that I, if it's going to cost us or those residents money to make the transfer, then why is it, why do we need to do it?
What would, what would be the cost of the transfer?
Can we throw this to staff for a recommendation, maybe, you know, in a future meeting? Volume, how many, when, where, what? And then what, what kind of those costs might be for us or the individuals? See where that goes.
I look at this like the fences, right? I mean, we need consistency, right?
Okay, that was four.
That was four.
No more.
I have two topics. My first question for Mark, please, and I don't expect you to have this information with you. If you wouldn't mind including in the next notes or perhaps the next meeting, whichever is more convenient for you, the street cleaning schedule?
Sure. They're out this week. Sweeping is taking place, started today.
Oh, well, how nice, thank you. And then my second item, just wanted to say post office parking lot is looking fantastic. They are, they haven't quite, well, I don't know if they opened it today. They, they haven't opened up the drop off part, but just want to say thank you to Sonia and Jeff for staying on them. I really appreciate that. I have another one for you to check into though. The Walgreens off of Orchard and Mayfield, they are starting to get some pretty big potholes in the parking lot that concern me not only with people having property damage, but I'm more concerned about somebody twisting an ankle, breaking a leg. I'm not sure that they're at a point that that whole parking lot needs to be redone, but they certainly need to be filling in those holes because they look pretty dangerous. So that's all I have, thank you.
Thanks.
Steve?
No?
I wasn't going to tell them, I was just pointing.
Just one quick, attended the food truck festival this weekend, which was fantastic. You know, I think there was about 13 trucks there. It was great, DJ was great, you know, perfect weather, Christina took care of all that. So thank you to Christina for that. And also Montgomery Countryside Fire Department's pancake breakfast was Sunday and it was well attended and very good even with the rain. So thank you to them as well.
Thanks. Pete?
So I have a request on behalf of the Montgomery Rotary Club. As you may recall, in the past, we've done street painting for the, on River Street in front of Village Hall. We'd like to bring that back. We ran a contest to get some submissions from the local high schools and we have a, an image that I want to show and I'll, it'll be a progression. This was the, the image that was submitted by Kate Pullman from Oswego High School. And it is a, you know, it's, it's an interesting piece. Initially, when we looked at it, it, if you guys can appreciate this, trying to get all this detail on the street is not easy, right? So we took her concept and then we made the, we simplified it, if you will, and tried to keep the major elements, but, but make it something that we could apply to the street. And that one is coming up next. Okay.
Don't do that. Now you ruined surprise.
Okay, so this is the simplified art form and it, you know, you can kind of get an idea that the Montgomery Bridge is at the top, you know, you have the world. And the, the theme of the artwork was the environment. So it has the, the bridge, it has the river, it has land. We will probably make some additional modifications to the paint colors because the blacket or the dark blue edge on, is probably not going to be appropriate. We'll probably go with something lighter, so it stands out on the, on the black street. But that's generally the image. And then the next one is the intended image on the, how it would look on the street. And we're proposing to, it'd be 24 foot in diameter, centered on the drive aisles or on the drive lanes. And then we would like to have a small rotary symbol as we did before, you know, when we had the last street painting. So what the club is asking for is concurrence for this to be applied to the street. And we're hoping that we would do this possibly in July, you know, weather permitting and everything. And likely do it on a Saturday. We'd certainly invite everybody to attend and participate. But yeah, that's the, the plan, so.
That's awesome. Love it. Like it. It'd be fantastic to invite the artist either to that or to a board meeting or to Montgomery Fest and put a sign up and make a big deal about it.
Yeah. So we'll, we'll coordinate with Public Works and, and start working on it. And we'll, once we get the dates for the actual painting, we'll certainly have that posted for the, on the village website.
I think it'd be better to just say, congratulations, you won, here's your paintbrush. We'll see you on Monday.
All right, thank you.
Definitely need volunteers.
Thank you. Anybody have anything else? Okay. Hearing none, the next two village board meetings, the committee, the whole, on the 20th and the village board meeting on the 26th will very likely be canceled. Our next meeting will be in July. Is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved. Second.
Yes.
Trustee Marisak?
Yes.
Trustee Betzinger?
Yes.
Trustee Guyer?
Yes.
Trustee Spurling?
Adjourn, thank you.